Okay, it's seven o'clock and good evening and welcome to the April 2nd meeting of the Clayton City Council. And at this time, I would like to have the city clerk, Gabby, would you please take the role?
Yes, Councilmember Clovin.
I'm here.
Tillman?
Here.
Councilmember Juan is excused, Vice Mayor Trippiano?
I'm here.
Mayor Diaz?
Yes, here I am.
Thank you.
And I'd like everyone to join me in standing up and doing the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Okay. Item three, public comment for non-agenda items, and I have Jim Killoran up to bat.
Good day, Council.
Recording in progress.
I'll make this quick. We're going to be having our first Firewise meeting in Clayton, in one of our neighborhoods. It'll be on April 10th at 3:00 PM. The location, the address will be 5010 Raven Way. Just a little bit details what Firewise is and what we can expect at this neighborhood meeting. We'll be working with and talking with Inspector Chris Giddis from the Contra Costa Fire Protection District, and he will walk us through the best way to mitigate fire risk by creating defensible zones for your property, choosing fire-resistant building materials, and also reminding us to have an emergency action plan in place. We look forward to all the residents for their attendance, as this will help keep your home, your neighborhood, and our community safe from the risks of wildfires. So again, April 10th at 3:00 PM at 5010 Raven Way. Thank you very much.
Keith Hayden.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I came before the council a couple of weeks ago and shared the community concern we have with the rotating city staff that we're seeing going in and out, and since then, we've also lost our former Assistant City Manager. And I had asked the City Council to seriously consider performing an investigation and doing some research to find out why this continues to happen, and was curious if you'd been doing any exit interviews or talking with the existing staff to see from their perspective how it's going at City Hall, to really try and stop this constant activity and churn that we're experiencing here, because it's having an effect on our city. So I was curious how that's going, and I would hope that you're looking into that and not just ignoring it and hope it gets better, because that's not the way to deal with it. And the other item has to do with what I've heard is the Special Events Committee's approach to our Concert in the Park series. And I understand that they've proposed that the donations that are part of our concert experience, when people donate to keep the concert series going, that the people that are going around asking for donations be a nonprofit, and that the proceeds that each concert obtained from the audience is shared then with this nonprofit. And I find that interesting. In fact, I question if that's even legal for the city to make donations to a nonprofit, and I'm curious if the subcommittee had received council authority and approval to do that, because that's a departure from what we used to do. In years past, it was the City Council members that went out, and actually, they took advantage of the opportunity to meet with the residents here in Clayton, and they did that for free. And now, the way it's being set up is that you're in effect going to be paying someone or at least sharing the proceeds with those individuals. So I just question that, first off, if it's legal, and second, did the City Council participate in that decision? Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Susan Hurl, speaking on public comment number three.
Susan Hurl with Republic Services. I thought since I was here already that I would just do a shout out for the first Clayton compost giveaway. Everyone should have gotten this postcard. We have, quite a few people have signed up already. There's still a lot of slots left, so if you go to www.republicservices/clayton.ca, you can sign up and get your compost on April 13th from 9:00 to 1:00 at the Keller House. If you have any questions, you can go to email sustainabilityadvisors@republicservices.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. I have no more cards for public comment on non-agenda items. Anybody out there wish to address the council on that item? And do we have anybody online?
I can confirm there's nobody online right now.
Thank you so much. And with that, I'm going to close public comment on non-agenda items.
Point of order, Mayor, really quickly. I would like to ask the city attorney if she could help us clarify the question that Mr. Hayden asked about the legality of donating the funds to a nonprofit.
Sure, Councilmember Tillman. I think it would be permitted so long as there's a public purpose. I would presume in this case, in lieu of having volunteers or other people provide their services in terms of collecting the donations, those portions of the donations would go to the nonprofit. It probably should come back to the council if that hasn't already been discussed. I don't believe it has been discussed at the council, but I don't think it would be a violation of the law if the council wanted to move in that direction.
Okay. And there's no amount, max amount that you can give? For example, if there's $10,000, that is up to $10,000, that's promised to this nonprofit, that's perfectly fine?
I think you'd probably just want to make sure, in theory, yes, it's fine, but it sounds to me like it was supposed to be part of the donation, so in theory, you would want to make sure that you collected a certain amount. I don't know if you would want to do it as a percentage.
It's splitting the proceeds up to, yes.
Yeah.
It's not giving all of them, it's splitting.
There's a cap of $10,000.
Correct.
Yeah, that makes more sense. Sorry, I thought it was giving them $10,000 without knowing how much proceeds.
No, no, no. It was, the way that it was worded on the PFC's Facebook page is exactly how I stated it, which was volunteers needed to help pass around the donation buckets, and that there would be a split of the donations, it actually called it profits, a split of the profits with the city up to $10,000. So I wanted to be sure that that was accurate and okay.
And I'm on that committee. I can address this later when I do my updates, but we never said $10,000. We wanted the money to go back to the schools this year rather than just to the city coffers, and we thought it would be nice to engage with the help of the PFC, and they were thrilled to have an opportunity to do this. We never said an amount, and we haven't finalized anything with them yet, but they're very eager to participate so they can raise some money for the middle school.
I think it's elementary school, and I think that that's good, that you're clarifying that the amount was promised.
Sorry, elementary.
Because that is what they have on their Facebook page. That's being shared everywhere, and it says that they can receive up to $10,000.
Yeah. We didn't get that specific with them, and I'll look at the Facebook page, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item number four, and that's the consent calendar. Does anybody have anything on there they would like to address separately?
I would like to pull item 4C.
C?
Yes.
Okay, 4C's been pulled, and you're on.
Thank you. No, I'm not opposed to it at all. I would like to understand a little bit more, and I was hoping that someone from the police department can give us a little bit more information about how this came about. I'm glad to see that there is a grant that you went after, and I would love to hear more, and I'm sure the community would too.
Sergeant Jason Shaw would be...
Yes, and I met with him earlier today to get fully briefed on this item, so Sergeant Shaw is ready to address that. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. We are very excited about this grant award. Each year, the Department of Homeland Security allocates certain funding to each state based on certain criteria that they have. Within each state, it's then broken down by county, then within the county, agencies can submit grant requests as long as they fall within the criteria that Homeland Security wants to fund. This year, we submitted three and were awarded all three of them for a total of $87,000. So we are very excited about that. I will tell you, when the initial staff report was written, we had not yet received the award letters. I have since received them, so if you did want to see them, I have brought copies this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I didn't have any specific questions for you, but I am glad that you were able to share that, and thank you for taking the initiative and spearheading this and bringing in additional funds. That's great. And what does it, can you explain exactly what it does, allow the PD to purchase?
So we're going to be purchasing ballistic helmets for all of our officers. We are also getting some night vision and thermal imaging equipment to use for search and rescue type operations. And then our biggest item, this is a side-by-side search and rescue type vehicle. It's similar to the ones made by Polaris. This is all equipment that we've wanted to get, but is typically out of reach for us, and having a grant opportunity like this puts it within our grasp.
Great, thank you.
Anybody, go ahead.
Yeah, and I just, I just want to pull item 4B temporarily for a minute, some clarification. I had some questions around this, and Prop D, I cannot thank you enough for answering my questions today. And I don't know if we have Kristen Harvey on Zoom from NBS, but again, she was so helpful in explaining that we do have this surplus from this district closeout analysis, but the surplus is in our budget already. It's $528,000 already accounted for, and this will be something that you shouldn't see on your 2024 tax bill, but you may have seen it on 2023. And so it applied to all resident, all properties in the city. I don't know if she's on, but she did a great job of explaining it. That's all I wanted to share.
Thank you. Anybody else from the City Council on this item? All right, now we're going to take public comment on that, and I don't have any cards, but do we have anybody online for the comment on the consent calendar?
I can confirm no comments.
Thank you so much, and I'll close the public comment on this item, bring it back to City Council for action.
Move approval.
And I'll second.
Moved by Councilmember Clovin and seconded by Councilmember Tillman. Would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Juan is excused, Vice Mayor Trippiano?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, that completes item four and all of the things that go with it, and we'll now move on to item number five. First, 5A, these are proclamations and presentations. And the first one that we have is a proclamation for the declaring the month of April Autism Awareness Month, and I'm going to read a proclamation for the autism group that have been represented at past couple of meetings. Whereas the City Council, excuse me, the City of Clayton recognizes the importance of raising awareness about autism spectrum disorder, ASD, and whereas autism is a complex neurodevelopment disorder that reflects, excuse me, affects communication, social interaction, and behavior. Whereas early detection and diagnosis of autism are crucial for the providing timely interventions and support to individuals with autism. And whereas research shows that early intervention can significantly improve outcomes for individuals with autism, enhancing their quality of life and promoting their development. And whereas the City of Clayton is committed to promoting autism acceptance and understanding within our community. And whereas it is important to educate our residents about autism and foster a culture of inclusivity and support for individuals with autism spectrum. And whereas the City of Clayton will fly the autism flag, made possible by the generous donation of Allison Snow from April 1st through April 30th of 2024, as a symbol of our commitment to raising awareness and support individuals with autism in our city. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the City of Clayton, the month of April is officially recognized as Autism Awareness Month. In the City of Clayton, let us come together as a community and raise awareness, promote acceptance, and support individuals with autism in our city. Thank you. Is Allison here tonight?
No.
Oh, she is not here. Well, then I will give this back to the city clerk to make sure it gets to... Yeah, I'm going to, let me do the other one first, and then I'll bring them over to you. Okay, that concludes item 5A. Any comments on that? None. 5B. This one is related to proclaiming the week of April 7th through the 13th of 2024 as National Library Week. So first, whereas libraries offer the opportunity for everyone to connect with others, learn from new skills, and pursue the passions, and no matter what they have in terms of their lifelong journeys, whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all members of the community, regardless of their race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender, identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, developing and expanding collections, programs, and services that are as diverse as the population they serve. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. Whereas libraries play an important and pivotal role in the economic development by providing resources and support for job seekers, entrepreneurs, and small businesses, thus contributing to local prosperity and growth. Whereas libraries make choices that are good for the environment and the maker sense of, excuse me, economically, creating thriving communities for better tomorrow. Whereas libraries are featured or treasured institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge, and safeguarding both physical and digital resources for presenting and future generations to enjoy. Whereas libraries are an essential public good and fundamental institutions in democratic societies, working to improve society, protect the right of education, literacy, and promote the free exchange of information and the ideas for all. Whereas libraries and library workers are joining their library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Clayton proclaimed April 7th through 13th, 2024, National Library Week. During this week, all residents are encouraged to visit the library and celebrate the adventures and opportunities they unlock for us every day. Thank you. Is anyone from the library? Ah, very good. Come on forward.
So quiet in here tonight, I forgot. I just wanted to make, thank you all for the proclamation, and also make sure that those of you who are in town this week for spring break, or who may know other families in town, we have a raptor program tomorrow. They're going to bring raptor, like, taxidermy, and then also some, they may have some live raptors as well that have been injured, but can't, you know, that are captive now. They will not be able to be touched by the audience, that's been a common question, but you know, they are raptors. But we have that tomorrow too, and also, we have all our regular programs this week, so if you are in town for spring break, please come by. That includes tai chi, storytime, so we've got a lot going on, even though it's spring break. Thanks.
Thank you very much, and hopefully everybody does enjoy this wonderful building and the library that's affiliated with it, and have been since the inception of the library. And there's a couple of people in our community that helped build this, including Dave and Joyce Atkinson, Kirk and Roberta Paulson, and a number of other individuals, and their names are out on a plaque out there. This is a wonderful facility. Please use it. Any comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to add too, thank you Geneva, that the semi-annual book sale is later this month, and for members only on April 12th, and then all day on Saturday, April 13th, and Sunday, April 14th. So come out and buy your books. I think they're like a dollar and 50 cents, right?
Just to clarify that, I forgot about the Clayton Community Library Foundation.
The foundation, correct.
Members only, doesn't mean library cardholders.
Yes, sorry. Library Foundation members. Correct, Library Foundation members. Thank you, Geneva.
Okay, thank you very much. Any public comment on this item? Now we'll move to item 5C, whoa, which is a sustainability award presented by Republic Services. Susan Hurl.
There we go. Okay. Susan Hurl with Republic Services, thank you for having me tonight. It is my honor to present the first sustainability award for the City of Clayton. This award recognizes individuals or organizations who are above and beyond, who have created superior sustainability programs and are a beacon for others to look to try to copy what they do. And for the first award, it's only appropriate that it go to the Clayton Business and Community Association, otherwise known as the CBCA. So I've been a member of the CBCA for over 20 years, and in that time, I've had the great pleasure of doing the garbage and recycling at Art and Wine with my husband. And I will tell you that this is truly a volunteer organization, and it is amazing to me that over these, all these years, that they have created a sustainable, solid waste and recycling program at all their events, which is very hard to do, especially with volunteers. There have been good years, and there have been bad years in terms of, you know, our success, but never once did they say, "We're not going to do this anymore." They never said, "Go ahead and bring your containers, but we're not going to use them." They've never said, "We're done. Do it yourself. We've had it." They've always said, "You know, we didn't do great. How can we do better?" It was always about continuous improvement, and with volunteers that come in and come out, it's very hard to do. So I give them a lot of credit. In addition, they already reached out to me about getting organics at Art and Wine, at the barbecue, and at Oktoberfest. I didn't have to twist their arm, or tell them, "You have to do this." They're doing it willingly, and it goes back to their commitment and their dedication to sustainability and to programs, and to just doing the right thing. And they're a great organization. I've appreciated working with them all these years, and I'd like to ask CW Wolf to come up, who's the president of the CBCA, to give him this award.
Oh, thank you. Well, thank you. That's the first time I've ever heard anybody say they were thrilled to pick up trash at Art and Wine.
Well, I wasn't actually thrilled, but, okay, so first of all, this is made out of sustainable materials, and at the end of its life, it can be recycled, and it's not a bocce ball at Hartley. Because I know some people might think that, and it's not one of those balls where you shake it and you get a fortune at the bottom or something. So anyway, on behalf of Republic Services, I give this award to the...
Oh, tell me too.
Oh, jeez. My God. I almost said a bad word, too.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and we really appreciate Republic Services recognizing that we're a good steward, not only financially for the benefit of the Clayton community, but also environmentally. And she said everything that needs to be said, except the dates of the upcoming Art and Wine. That's the 27th and 28th of this month in downtown Clayton, and then we have our 40th anniversary celebration, and our BBQ and Brews Fest on June 14th and 15th at Oakhurst, and then we have the big Oktoberfest coming up the first weekend in October. So anyway, thank you so much to Republic Services and to the city. Thank you so much. Okay, any public comment on this item? Hearing none, we've completed all items of 5A, B, and C. We now move to item six, which are reports from the acting city manager.
Good evening, Mayor Diaz and council members. I only have one report for tonight, and it ties in nicely with the library. You'll see where I'm going in a minute. The Grove Play Structures are going to be closed from April 8th until the 27th because they're getting a new play structure surface. So during that time, the Grove Play Structure will not be available to children, but it sounds like the library will have some really exciting programming going on. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. And moving on, we have item seven, public hearings, and we have none. So we'll now move into the action items, number 8A first, and turn it over to... Oh, excuse me, Larry Thies. Excuse me.
I'm pin-shitting tonight for the city managers, and I appreciate the opportunity for the council. I'm going to be introducing a couple of members of the Trails and Landscape Committee, and they will discuss the item a little bit more in detail. My intro to this item is to let you know that, I think, as you're all aware, there's a landscape maintenance district. The main components of that district are the maintenance and the, you know, repairs of the landscape within the medians, the roadway medians, or the, in the roadways, and the trail system. We're focusing tonight on the trails themselves. There has been a previous trail assessment done, and that is attached to the staff report tonight. Before, the council tonight is just getting concurrence on proceeding with putting out a request for proposal for an update to this assessment. The intention would be that not only would it look at the current condition of the trail system, but also look and prioritize potential repairs, levels of maintenance, and estimate costs related to any improvements. So that information could be brought back to the council to make informed decisions in the future, especially relative to the LMD, the current assessment's going to expire within a couple of years. And the intention would be, you would have that information available to discuss the level of not only maintenance of the existing system, but if there's any desire to add improvements to the trail system, that those can be properly estimated, preliminarily designed, and then the cost can be incorporated into any potential renewal of that assessment or increase for potential improvements. So that way, the information's available not only to council, but to the public, who then will also want to know that information in the future if there is a measure in front of the voters. So I'm going to introduce, I think, who wants to go first, Stephen? So, and he'll discuss a few items, and then we're happy to take any questions. Just to review, we are looking at the RFP portion, just authorizing that the actual contract would need to come back before the council. The estimated cost at this time, I would, is probably $100,000 to $150,000 worth of consulting work. Obviously, scale could be adjusted, but that, it's important so you know that. Obviously, you'll make a decision on that contract after we get, you know, proposals, but in order to even proceed with that, I think the council should have some input. So I'm going to turn it over to Stephen.
So yeah, the request is simple, it's just, we want your guidance, your support for, before we engage a process. We're about to consume a lot of volunteer hours to kind of build out RFPs, then talk to vendors, see what they have to offer, and build those things out. Like Larry said, it's going to be $100,000 to $150,000. So in good faith, we don't want to consume a lot of energy if you're not in principle behind, sorry. Okay, great. Yeah, so if in principle, you're in support of spending that kind of money to get such a proposal built, then we would go and do all the work to get that to happen. So in terms of just giving a little bit background on where we got, how we got here, is that a couple of years ago, this team was constituted as, you know, Trails and Landscape. You know, what we found is all of our energy was being spent on landscape, you know, irrigation, trimming trees, making sure the weed abatement was happening, and we realized we were doing a disservice to trails. And you know, if you went to the 60th anniversary, you heard all about trails, 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 and then we did nothing for the trails. So we were feeling like we weren't doing a remit. And so one of the, I remember the first meeting very clearly, and they asked us, "Hey, do you want to spend money on this trail?" I said, "How do I know if I want to spend on that trail or another trail? Give me the list of trails." And we had no inventory at the time, nor did we have, you know, a backlog of kind of remediation that would need to happen on any trail. We had no sense of value for any of these trails, so I'm like, "I have no idea how to spend this money." That's the first moment we put on the budget, $50,000. We made up that number because we had no idea how much it would cost. We made up that number because we had no idea how much it would cost. It was only when Brett came in and tried to educate us about what that kind of proposal would look like, where we realized it's more like $150,000, because you need to go and walk the land, you do, you know, GPS to figure out where everything is and kind of do the assets. And then you try to understand value, and you understand costs. And when you look at value and costs, you know, then you can kind of prioritize. So why are we coming to you right now? It's like, okay, so we know that we're in a budgetary deficit, and we know that landscapes are a priority, and we know we need to ask for more money. So when we go to ask for more money, we need to have a justification for that money. And I don't think people know that we haven't been spending money on our Trails, or that they're falling into disrepair and fences are falling down, trees are falling into the water. I don't think anybody knows that part. So in full transparency to the community, when we go to ask for more money, we think this report would be a solid way to go after the community and say, "Hello, you know, we're here for you. We want to support you, and we want to put our money where their mouth is on these pieces." So I think, you know, Larry already outlined the things. It's like identify, validate our list of assets, understand how backedlogged they are in remediation, bring them up to Class A, B, C, whatever the community wants relative to the cost of spending money, or I mean, money on these Trails, understanding the value and priorities. So if we go after the money, you know, this report can be used one of two ways. It can be used as a marketing campaign to say, "Here's what we want to do." What if we fail to get the money? If it's prioritized, we know which Trails to not support in order, because we've already prioritized and understand value for the community. So really, what we're asking for here tonight is that you guys support us going through to do the hard work of getting these vendors in and talking to them, engaging them in good faith. So when we bring you a proposal from $100,000 to $150,000, you're willing to say yes in order to get that report generated. And so I'm just looking for that support here. Do I ask the question?
I think you just did.
Yes, I will recognize council member Tillman.
I think you just did. Is there more of your presentation so that, because what we usually do is hear from you folks. We hear from the public. We ask questions after the whole thing, and then we debate and deliberate.
Can we ask questions now though? Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're up now, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Hi, Steve.
Hello.
Kim Trupiano. So just a couple of quick questions. So would the, so the work that the TLC would do would be reviewing the RFP applications? Would that be in conjunction with our city engineer? Okay. And so we're estimating those will probably come back between $100,000 and $150,000. Do, then actually doing the work, is it just the TLC? And the reason I ask before you answer that is I have so many people in the community that ask me, "How can they help? How, could they just come out on a weekend? Can they..." So there's volunteers that do not sit on the committee that would love to assist.
Right, that's a great question. So none of us on the TLC are actually experts in actually how to do these assessments. In fact, if we had experts in-house, we would just hire those people to do it. That's why you hire consultants who go and build these stories in order to kind of sell proposals to do, you know, taxes and the rest. So we're hiring the experts to do it. But if we want to put in our RFP to say, "Hey, we have volunteers that are willing to walk the Trails or do part of the labor force to actually do the assessment," we could throw that in there. But mostly, they use drones and other things to kind of, and I'm a non-expert, so they're, you know, us helping them might not be help. We don't know that yet. Maybe Larry can speak on whether volunteers can actually help this professional process.
And my very last question is, there's 300,000 or so in reserves. Could the reserves be used for this consulting? Yes, Larry?
I think the intention would be to utilize the current LMD funds, but just to be clear, I think you're all aware that the funds are running in a structural deficit at this time. So it is an investment, I would say, into the future, but it's, you know, something that you are taking money from, the same pot of money for the maintenance, all these other elements. This would be kind of the investment for the future of trying to keep it going beyond the sunset of it in a couple of years.
Okay. Thank you very much for answering.
Thank you. Any other questions here or comments from the council? Go ahead.
My question is, so after the study is done, and they've prioritized all the Trails, A, B, C, one, two, three, to the end, and, by the way, I like your document in here. I didn't realize there were that many Trails that were called out as such. I'm going through each one of them and each of their individuality, and it was good to see it in that manner. Is the result of the consultant's study, in addition to the prioritization, is there going to be a cost figure associated with each Trail relative to the improvements that are necessary? Because clearly, as I walk the Trails, there's been a lot of damage by Mother Nature over the last couple of storm seasons that have caused them significant, you know, pitting, riveting, and washing away of gravel and topsoil. And so I'm just kind of curious, what is the, if we've engaged them, what's their ultimate product look like?
I think the main element you're asking the consultants to provide, and I'll touch upon Vice Mayor Trupiano's kind of question, utilizing volunteers would be great. I think it provides input. It certainly will help in the prioritization. I think getting input to understand, okay, which Trails are used most, which have the most value. Having a assessment of the existing system and determining, okay, what would it cost to bring it back to whatever level that, you know, the city decides, or multiple levels? We could look at, you know, sort of the A level versus the B level, the C level, have those numbers so you can aggregate those costs and determine, okay, if we want an A-level system across the entirety of the Trails, the network, then it will cost likely this amount. Obviously, probably the highest, right? And then so forth. And maybe a B level is certainly, you know, sustainable, is what the community feels is necessary. We don't need to have the Cadillac version. So you have options, and you also have to weigh that versus what that potential tax cost would be to the community. So the consultants we would be looking at or have prior experience, there's probably plenty of these, because Trail Networks exists lots of places. And to properly estimate those costs, such as like the asphalt Trails, repaving an asphalt Trail, or if it's vegetation management on maybe more of a earth Trail, I mean, all these elements should be included in a matrix of the different levels of maintenance that are necessary, and then just aggregating them based off different Trails. And I think you can certainly give it a weight, you know, that I would suggest, you know, that's why we have the consultant provide that.
But to answer your question more directly, it's both remediation to bring it up to standard plus ongoing maintenance on a go-forward basis. So it's both components. It's looking at how far they fall and below class, and then bringing them up and maintaining them on a go-forward basis, both parts.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, in the end, we're going to have a consultant's report that's going to grade each of our Trails and give us a cost to cure to reach a certain standard.
Right.
And from that value, the city council gets to choose how that may be funded, based in future conversations. Is that, is that correct?
I think there'd be the element of the funding and to confirm as the city what level of goal you want to meet for the Trail Network.
And just as part of this consultant's report, would they be able to identify those parts of the Trail which may be considered a liability to our citizens? Because quite frankly, I've seen significant damage, storm damage, which has caused riveting and could turn ankles and hurt bikes and things like that on walking portions of the Trails.
Yes, that would be definitely an element of just the basic level like you're talking about. So I think it's, to be a comprehensive assessment of essentially walking the entirety of the Trail Network and documenting all of the locations that need repairs, or maybe it's routine maintenance, those elements should be included. Now, as you're aware, in the existing staff report, there is a framework. I would say it's kind of like the basis, it's not into the digital age per se, and I think that other components would be added, like adding GIS to the, to the Network so that way it's easily identifiable, it could be shared with the public. Those are other elements that should be considered part of the RFP.
So would it be safe to say that whatever result that the consultant gave us would be a significant cost that would be a capital expenditure beyond what our current budget allows for?
I would say yes, because your current budget doesn't allow for the existing maintenance of the system right now. So anything beyond what we're not able to do at this day is going to be an increased cost.
Any questions?
And just one more, Larry. So some of our worst Trails that I think Councilmember Cloven may be referencing, we still do have some FEMA requests pending, correct? Particularly that Cardenay Trail?
Yeah, we currently have a claim placed within FEMA for three locations along the Cardenay Trail. That's specifically those spots, no other spots on the Trail System. Those are being reviewed right now, and we have not, they have not confirmed that we are going to receive reimbursement for those ones yet. So it is still pending. Now, there's a lot, we're not the only city that's waiting on stuff from 2023. So it's, right now, they closed the, sort of the claim period about two months ago, and so now they're finishing all the reviews. So hopefully, within the next few months. But I've been saying that for a few months now, so we'll see.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, did you want to speak?
Actually, I just want to add a few things to what you just said. So yeah, this is a report, and it's going to be almost useless for our current term of the actual money we're spending right now. This is a report that you use for funding the next, because we're flying blind. We have a, you know, the deficits you saw were deficits against maintenance. There was no deficits against remediation against current Trails or maintenance on the Trails go-forward. So if you get it funded at the current levels, you will still not have Trails. So the whole point is to actually advocate for the Trails. In terms of accessibility, we have two callouts for accessibility and sustainability written into the proposal so that every Trail will be, you know, acknowledged as to its level of accessibility, because by law, you have to kind of say when it's accessible or not. So we might actually put signage on inaccessible Trails in order to make sure that we're actually meeting the law. So there is some exposure there without doing the accessibility assessment. So we believe that we just need to do it just at baseline to understand where we are. To not do it is to be blind when you go for funding. To do it, you know, you might not be able to afford it, but at least you know, so.
And then also, does anybody know if there's any other funding out there for maintenance and repair? Are there grant opportunities or anything from the state or Larry?
So generally speaking, it's limited. There are definitely recreational-type grants if you're partnering with, say, East Bay Regional Park District or something like that, but generally, the system in Clayton is its own There are some infrequent grant opportunities, you know, like the FEMA is technically a grant, but that's more for damage, storm damage. So we would look for those when they do occur, but a good example is your gas tax funds that, you know, you pay at the pump. Those are supposed to be for roadways, so you can't use those funds on Trails. So the sidewalks that run along the roadway are eligible. So you're already even more limited on the typical funds that the Capital Improvement Plan utilizes, which is like Measure J, which is CCTA money or gas tax. Those can, the Measure J may have certain elements because pedestrian circulation is part of that, but generally, the gas tax would not be, be able to be utilized on Trails.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more comments from, or questions from the city council?
I think we're going to have Tom.
Oh, you have another presenter.
Yeah, Tom's also part of the Trails and Landscape.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, I think you picked up my notes there. It might be on the bottom. My name is Tom Brand. I'm on the Trails and Landscape Committee. This is an ad hoc committee, which hopefully will convince you to move forward on improving Clayton's Trails. First of all, is there a problem? You all walk the Trails? The Trails are falling apart. Why aren't they, why are they falling apart? Voters in 2017 passed Measure H, which collects about a million, two to a million, three a year. We've looked at the financial records, and we've all looked at the Trails. Almost none of that money has gone to Trails. Now, I'm not saying that the money has been wasted. It's gone to operations and maintenance and landscaping the roadways. Important also, but the Trails have gotten almost nothing. This Measure H expires in June 2027. This is an extension from the previous 10 years, when the voters voted for pretty much the same measure. So it's coming up again soon enough that the council should be thinking about when and how is this going to get on the ballot and put before the voters again. I have a question for you. It's my understanding that at a recent council meeting, the majority council voted on a measure to effectively kill funding for the Trails, landscape maintenance, and the maintenance of the fountain. Am I correct on that? I have not seen, and I, there must be a record someplace of exactly what that, what you passed, but the effect appears to be that there will not be any more special funding for Trails. Can I get a response?
There was no specific vote regarding a measure to be put on the ballot. It was a discussion that was had. We decided not to proceed with a sales tax at that particular meeting. Just on the record, I did at the last meeting request a rediscussion of the sales tax and the LMD parcel tax at a future meeting, and we'll have that conversation when the mayor brings it to the council again. But we're aware that the general tax, which was discussed three years' meetings ago, requires a two-thirds vote, and that was not abundantly clear in the conversation that we had. We thought it was a 50-plus-one vote, and we're, just personally speaking, concerned that a two-thirds vote for general tax may not have the same legs. So we'll have additional conversations in the future when the mayor brings it to us, which would include the LMD tax or parcel tax.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I interject a question here? Are you speaking as a presenter now or the card that you submitted for public comment?
He's a presenter.
I don't understand.
Are you speaking as a presenter on this item now, or is that part of your questionnaire or the, filling out the card that you presented?
Yeah, well, I filled out my-
Which one?
I don't understand the distinction.
Okay.
He's part of the subcommittee that's-
As a presenter, you're part of the presentation of the item from the city engineer.
Yes.
After that, we discuss it at the city council, then I open it up for public comment, and that's when this, your card was submitted. So I'm asking you, are you speaking now as a presenter brought by the city engineer or your comment and public comment?
I would say both. Can I do both?
You can do one at a time.
So Tom, why don't we first ask, make the request for just starting the process of getting a-
My objective is to move forward to improve Clayton Trails. And the first step is to issue an RFP to get some experts in there, to get a condition assessment with the cost estimates, and perhaps, depending upon how this solicitation is let, to do some digital mapping, which will be available to both the public and to the professionals who will actually do these improvements. But we can't do that if we don't have the money. I wanted to mention quickly, I think probably everybody has seen the Clayton and its Trails map. Have you all seen this? The reason I bring this up is that it's outdated. There are Trails on here that no longer exist. There are Trails on here that never existed. There are trails on here that never existed. There are trails that exist that are not on here. In other words, this thing needs seriously updating. I stopped by the city hall to try to get some additional copies for all of you, just to take a look at. There's not even a clear definition of what is a trail. However, they only have two copies of this thing left. I really think that this is an obvious need, that we need to do something to update them, to actually define what the trails are in addition to their condition assessment and cost estimates. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Mr. City Engineer, are you having further to present?
No further presentation before the council, just to kind of conclude. The request tonight is simply to get concurrence on preparing an RFP, and then that, after the review and we select the best, most qualified candidate, then we present it back at the council for a contract approval. So tonight is strictly the RFP, proceeding with the RFP.
Great, thank you. Any questions further from the city council? Okay, now I'm going to open it up to public comment. I do have two cards, and I take, Mr. Brand, you've already asked some questions as you want, or do you have further questions to ask?
I don't think he hears you.
I guess I.
Okay, at this particular time, you have three minutes, and there'll be a timer put up on the clock.
And I think at this point, it would be not as a member of the TLC, since he had that time to present during the presentation.
You're going to turn on your mic. Turn on the mic.
You have three minutes. Okay. I'm not going to take three minutes. I'm just asking each of you to think about Clayton's trails, the history, the pride and joy that these trails have given over the years to the public, and look at their current condition by going out and walking them. One example is the Upper Easley Trail as you approach the Dog Park. That trail, since I've lived in Clayton for 13 years, has gone from approximate $20,000 reseal job to $200,000 estimate complete replacement. Now, that's just one example. I could, I could give you however many more you'd want to hear, but I, I can save that if anybody wants to contact me later. I walk all of the trails, my wife, my wife and I walk all of the trails in Clayton all of the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Next public comment on this item is from Lauren Kendorf.
Good evening, everyone. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I thought this question came into play possibly, so stop me if I'm off topic. So first of all, trails, very important. I walk them all the time, and some of them are in great need, and I'm afraid we're totally going to lose some, so to get on that is really important. I know when we talk landscape, a lot of people are talking about, you know, like the medians and the pretty planted landscape. And I'm just, a question I would have for you and something I've been doing a great deal of research on and, and planning with other community groups and things, and I've been throwing things at Holly along the way, like it's, I've got these ideas. But it's, it's about the city-owned property that's not officially a trail, and it's not a planned landscape median or park, but it's the city-owned property along our creeks and the Mount Diablo watershed that we're part of. And, and I've just been watching over the years and nudging at Jim Warburton, who did something wonderful yesterday, I was so excited, but about invasive species and how it's affecting our natural habitat, and the reason so many of us live here is for our beautiful mountain and the creeks and what, you know, makes Mount Diablo, Mount Diablo. But some of that is city-owned land, and there is a tension that needs to be there. I've actually been working, Kim, with a lot of volunteer groups and learning, and they've been out to look at some of our stuff out here. So I'm hoping to get something as far as a Friends of Clayton Creeks going, as the other cities have in our area. And so, anyway, it's something, and I don't know if that's considered in landscape and trail maintenance, but I certainly hope it is, and it's something we can include as time goes on. And, and we can do a ton with volunteer work, so I'm putting that out there to you guys. I've got a lot of things organized and brewing, so I hope to work with the city and the council. And like I said, I talked to Jim very recently, and we had some positive exchange, so hoping we can get that part of our city taken care of too, because it's, it's gorgeous and we need to take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith Hayden.
Mayor, Council. I just want to help with a little bit of the research and point out that way back when Presley began to develop Oakhurst, we took advantage of that as a city and got them as one of their conditions of approval to start our trail system and to reinforce it. And we used the creeks and valleys and the existing trails that, many of them had been in existence for quite some time, and we started with the Mount Diablo State Park map that has trails going out to the boundary of the state park and then logical extensions from that in, towards the city of Clayton. So we used that and came up with our own city trail map that we used then, and we were able to gain quite a bit of additional funding to start that trail system and the bridges across Diablo Creek, in large part were because of the Presley Process construction and their conditions of approval. So there was at one time a master map that was, we didn't really have one as a city until that time, but then we came up with a trail system and we had a map to do that, and we did set some priorities on some that had to be extended further. So we don't have to recreate some of that if the records can be found. That was over 30 years ago, but there was quite a bit of work done, and included in that then was the price to reinforce a lot of the areas along the creeks and put in the bridges. So that would be helpful as well, because some of these bridges need some additional maintenance, and we want to take advantage of any work that's already been identified and any cost. Of course, the cost would be different, but, but we have a good place to start with that initial trail work. All right?
Thank you. I have no further cards for public comment on this item, and that's the city clerk with anybody online to.
I can confirm, no comment.
And then I'm going to close public comment on this item and bring it back to the city council to see if there's any. Of course he can speak, but he has to fill out a card and give it to the city clerk. You don't have to fill it out now, but when you're finished, make sure she gets it.
Some great comments are being made, I just want to address them a little bit. So when you talk about, you know, some of the other lands that are city-owned that are not part of, they are technically part of TLC auspices, we just use kind of the general dollars to do the weed whacking and all the other pieces. So, I mean, we are asking specifically about the trails themselves, but again, all of it could use high-order planning and strategic thinking, and should we be thinking about species sustainability, accessibility for all of it, even though we tailor-made this one to that specific purpose? In terms of records, like, that has been the hardest part for this committee. We love those master plans and the, but we, it took two years to find that one file you saw that we scanned in and got. We at least have a baseline to start. That's why we're going to a third party, like, can you use digital technologies to get us into the right century and start moving this forward? So I just wanted to make that plea for getting us into the century. Thank you.
Thank you. And no one else has raised their hand, nobody's on the line? It's now officially closed for comment on this matter, and bringing it back to the city council for action.
So prior to, I believe, Councilmember Tillman being on Trails and Landscaping, I was doing Trails and Landscaping, and I think Councilmember Juan did it before that, although it was, when I did it, it was in the midst of COVID. But I remember the one trail that we had talked about was the Silver Creek Pathway, and if you've ever taken that pathway, which abuts Oakhurst and goes from the Cardenet Path Trail up towards Oakhurst, it's a small, narrow, paved pathway. There is such a huge liability in that pathway for walking and tripping, because the routes that have come up, that, you couldn't push a wheelchair on that if you tried, because it's, it's so, the trail is so mangled. And we had talked about the cost for replacing that trail back then, three or four years ago. So just, our trails need some significant attention, and I'm totally acknowledging that the amount of cost associated with the remediation of things like that, which are a liability to the city, is going to be well above what we're typically expecting in a budget cycle, and, but we still need to know what those costs are, and from my standpoint, yeah, let's get that assessed.
Well, and I completely agree with you. I think, again, I go back to our community survey, and what did people tell us? This is, this is why they live here, this is, even if they don't live here, this is, they love our trails. And so maybe they're loving them to death, right, like our national parks? And so I am absolutely all for this, and I have a question maybe for our city attorney, because we, I'm all for the RFP, and we don't know what the actual cost of maintenance and repairs, but are we allowed as a city to do a Save Our Trails fundraising drive? Like, I think that might be something people would be willing, are we allowed to fundraise for?
I can't say I've seen it done, because I've seen it done more in the capacity of having a district as you currently have, but I don't think you'd be prohibited from doing so.
Okay. And then the other folks that, you know, I would be happy to be a volunteer for this project, I'm a volunteer for Save Mount Diablo, I'm on the East Contra Costa County Habitat Conservancy Board, I'm the chair this year. So I think there's a lot of great resources out there, and so I'm a definite yes for this.
Go ahead, Councilmember Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say thank you to the committee. Did we lose Tom? Oh, okay, hi. Because they have really put in, they've been pounding the table for two years, really trying to, to make headway on getting this landscape maintenance district where it needs to be. I know that they several times have emailed me upset that they have been ridic, I'm going to say ridiculed, but people upset about the maintenance and the landscaping, et cetera. And to their point, the trails have been, well, they haven't been attended to, because the focus has been so much on what the landscaping looks like and the aesthetics of the city as people are coming in town. And I think that they felt like they were spinning their wheels, sitting in every meeting, and every time that they said, can we please put something forward to do something to beautify the city and do this assessment? And every single time that we did, and they would come back to the next meeting, it was like the goalposts kept moving because of the staff turnover, et cetera. And so I, I'm saying this to you all now, that I'm glad that you two are working with our city engineer on that, on this, to help see it to fruition, whatever's going to happen. And I know you did sit in here, Steve, at a meeting a few meetings ago with the chair, which was Aaron Bennett, and you two left here disheartened, hearing that, that the TLC or the Landscape Maintenance District could be dissolved. And I remember speaking up for you then to say, you might have lost your volunteers, right, the people who are actually trying to spearhead this. And so the next meeting, Brett brought them all back together, talked about doing this trails assessment and how important it is, not just for today, but for the future, and I think it's very important that you guys came here tonight to really express how important this is, to not neglect the trails. And to Mr. Brand's point, thank you, Tom, for saying you don't feel like the money was used incorrectly. There just isn't enough that's coming in every month from the parcel tax that we're getting for the LMD, which is why it's very important to do this work, to understand what is the real cost, what is, what is it going to take to bring us up to speed so that we really are informing the residents on what we need to continue this. So whether people want to go with the sales tax or folding the LMD and having a larger parcel tax, which I am, I already didn't vote for that, I think it's important to at least be knowledgeable about what our city needs, especially knowing that there are lots of trailways that could end us, end up costing us more in the long run, should anybody get hurt. And God forbid that we actually have to close a trail, especially part of the Cardenay Trail, where you're saying there are three, at least three portions, but that's one trail. There are so many others in this whole network that haven't been attended to, and I'm in agreement that we need to, you have to spend money in order to, to get us to where we need to be, and it's 2024, and it's about time we do something.
Thank you. Any other comments from the city council? I, I would endorse at the least, because this, the trails that we have are just a valuable asset to this community. They are used every day, and so I could see at least here looking for some RFPs to give us an idea of what, what would be helpful. So with anything like that, is the council have a recommendation, motion?
Sounds like we're giving the direction to staff to proceed, and that's, do you have what you need?
Thank you.
We're done with that? God, everybody, you're fine with the?
Direction was fine. Thank you.
Thank you very much on item 5A, excuse me, 8A. We'll now move into item 8B, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing, approving, and making the findings to employ Mr. Adam Polzer, a CalPERS retiree annuitant, as the interim city manager for the city of Clayton effective April 15, 2024. And I will ask the acting city manager and HR manager to please give us a report.
Thank you. So I did invite Mr. Adam Politzer to join us today on Zoom, so he is available if you did have any questions for him. I know the council has already interviewed him, and I have met with him, and I find him to be quite a wonderful, lovely, seasoned professional who would be a great asset to the city of Clayton.
Thank you. I see he is online, so if we can bring him up and let him.
That was Adam?
Talk to us.
Yes, Mayor Diaz, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, Mr. Adam, go ahead.
Very nice to be with you all tonight, and I just want to thank you and the council members for your support and entrusting me to lead your team as your interim city manager, if you so choose to do so this evening. I really appreciate it, getting the opportunity to meet the council members, and more recently, meeting with Vice Mayor Trupiano and Councilmember Cloven, and I'm very excited based on who I've already had a chance to meet with and talk with and email with, to join your team and work with your dedicated and hard-working staff. I would like to just share for the public a little bit about me. You all on the council got to meet me, but I've worked in local government for over 35 years. I retired in 2020 after 13 years as the city of Sausalito's city manager. Prior to that, I served the community, in the Community Services Department with the city of Palo Alto and the city of Belmont. Since retiring, I've served as interim city manager for the city of Emeryville and the town of Fairfax, and most recently, I served as assistant city manager for the city of East Palo Alto. My wife and I have been married for 30 years, and we live in Greenbree, which is a small community nestled in the hills between San Rafael and Larksburg, where we raised our three daughters, Hannah, Sydney, and Josie. I also would like to take a moment to just thank and acknowledge Amy Walker. She has been so helpful and a real pleasure to work with this past week. Amy, you will be sorely missed, but we wish you well on your next adventure. And again, Mayor Diaz and council members, I look forward to serving your community, working alongside of you, and if appointed tonight, I'll be joining your team on Monday, April 15. And if appointed tonight, I'll be joining your team on Monday, April 15.
Thank you, Adam. Any comments or questions from the council? I'm now going to open it for public comment on this item. I have one card, and that card is from Ben Grover. Ben? Oh, he's on item 8C. Thank you for reminding me of that. I overlooked that. But anyway, okay, so I'm going to close public comment. For those in the audience here, do we have anybody online for this matter?
I can confirm no comment.
Nobody online, so public comment is closed on item 8B. And now we'll bring it back to the city council.
Well, Adam, I'm glad that you were able to join us this evening. Peter and I also asked him yesterday if he'd like to join us. I'm just so impressed with your experience and how seasoned you are. And we are really looking forward to having you join us and help us during this interim period. And I'm hoping that we're going to approve your contract tonight, so you can start on April 15.
Anybody else? I want to say something. Councilmember Clovin and I actually agreed on this and this choice. And I want to make sure everybody is aware of that. It was a very thorough interview, and we were very impressed by Mr. Politzer. So, Adam, I just want to say, behalf of myself, we look forward to having you join our team. Anything else?
I concur with my colleagues. Adam, I'm looking forward to seeing you on the 15th. Welcome aboard. Well, you know, wait a couple more seconds, I guess, technically.
Okay, do we?
I'll make it simple. I moved to adopt a resolution authorizing, approving, and making findings to employ Mr. Adam Politzer. Politzer? Is that how you say it, Adam? Politzer?
Politzer.
Yes, that's correct.
Politzer.
Politzer. A CalPERS retired annuitant to be the interim city manager beginning April 15.
And I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilmember Clovin and seconded by Vice Mayor Trupiano to act on this item where we adopt the resolution authorizing, approving, and making the findings to employ Adam Politzer as a CalPERS retired annuitant to the interim position city manager. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Juan is excused. Vice Mayor Trupiano?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz?
Yes, okay. Thank you very much. We now have another acting city manager. Thank you so much. Okay, the next item we have is item 8C, which is to adopt a resolution to establish a Vision Zero policy related to eliminating fatalities and injury accidents on the Clayton roadway network in conjunction with the review and approval of the local roadway safety planning. Mr. City Engineer?
Thank you, Mayor. You already discussed the item. This is a follow-up to a discussion we had as public outreach back, I believe, in late October. We have Grace Karski from Kittleson Associates, who's the consultant firm that is preparing our local roadway safety plan. She's going to do a PowerPoint presentation. I'll turn it over to her in a second. But the items before you tonight are the adoption of the resolution for a Vision Zero policy. It's Clayton's own policy, just to be clear. It does sort of piggyback on the concepts that many other agencies utilize, like CCTA or MTC, of really striving as a goal, as an agency, to eliminate serious injuries and fatalities on its roadway network. And that generally involves pedestrians, vehicle drivers, bicyclists. And then the other component is the finalization of the local roadway safety plan. Both of these together are components that are needed for agencies to have for future grant funding opportunities. So this will allow us to pursue like highway safety improvement, HSIP programs, or this is called SS4A, which is mentioned in the staff report as well. So the other element that's involved is the formation of a working safety or safety working group. We anticipate, we left it general, that it would be primarily comprised of city staff, like the police chief, the city engineer, probably the city manager, to do the annual review of the data. And then every two years, come back and present before the council sort of the report, an update, and then any recommendations. Probably also provide any updates on grants that the city is pursuing or received and safety-related projects. We would encourage any participation from the public or if the council so chooses, maybe they want to appoint someone, they could. Our intention is to have it as a working group, not really as a official standing committee. And then it really reinforces that you're going to continually update the plan, review the data, and, you know, eventually also update the local roadway safety plan itself, you know, every five to 10 years. So that way you can consider new policies, also maybe different innovations within the traffic safety world. So I'm going to turn it over to Grace.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me back. I think I'll just let you know when to move the slides forward. But Larry, thank you so much for the introduction. Yeah, really, this presentation will just be to go through the different components, a little update to what I presented on last time. I think last I was here was an update on the safety analysis that we had just done. And so now we've, with your input and with the public input, we've been able to develop the rest of the plan, and that's what we're presenting today. So next slide. Introduction, oop. Larry gave an introduction, so just an overview of the LRSP components. I'll talk a bit about the vision and goals, the plan development, existing conditions, the countermeasures and safety strategies, the safety projects that we identified and provided some example improvements for, and then the evaluation and implementation that Larry had just mentioned, and then some of our next steps after this. Next slide. So as Larry mentioned, the local roadway safety plans or safety plans in general are becoming a requirement, especially for that grant funding. So a final LRSP is what I'll start calling them from here on out, is needed to get that H-SIP funding, an adopted safety plan. And so in this case, the local roadway safety plan is needed for that Safe Streets for All funding. This LRSP is a local equivalent of the Caltrans state highway safety plan. So whereas the state highway safety plan looks at our state highway system, this local roadway plan is really focused on the local roadway network in Clayton. Next slide. And so what makes this plan different from other safety plans is that we use the safe system approach to really drive the development of this plan. And the safe system approach includes multiple layers of protection that's included to prevent crashes from occurring and minimize the harm that is caused by, to individuals if crashes do occur. So really, the big thing is safety, the safe system approach acknowledges that humans can make mistakes and that the vulnerabilities do exist. But by building that redundancy, we are reducing the harm that can occur. And so this LRSP uses that safe system approach and to assess this roadway safety, identify and prioritize improvements and actions to enhance safety, and then identify the safety partners who can champion the safety for Clayton. Next slide. And so first, it's developing and envisioning what safety can look like for Clayton. And so this plan establishes the vision to eliminate fatal and serious injury crashes by 2050 and then to enhance the existing safety network, to promote traffic safety, meet the needs of the community members, and enrich lives of residents in Clayton. Next slide. And with that vision, we have some goals. So first is to monitor and evaluate the safety emphasis areas that were identified in the plan and then community needs to identify and prioritize opportunities to reduce crash risk, to implement proven safety countermeasures to address the common crash types that were identified in Clayton, to partner with other local agencies to promote roadway safety, and to provide opportunities for citizen engagement in identifying safety issues and developing solutions for safety across the community. And so as part of this plan development, we engaged stakeholders. We engaged you all at the city council meeting, got some great feedback from you all. We also had the opportunity to go to Clayton Oktoberfest last year to gather some more feedback from the community on their safety concerns and desires and what they'd like to see in Clayton. Really wonderful festival, by the way. I grew up in Contra Costa County, and that was the first time I've ever been to the Oktoberfest. But some of the feedback that was included, most concerned was speeding in Clayton and mostly speeding in areas where there are vulnerable users, such as schools in neighborhoods where people may be walking, and then just kind of on the main roads as well. We also heard some feedback for a desire for a safe and connected bicycle network. So it was really great to hear that people do enjoy biking Clayton and that they would love to just see that those facilities be improved as much as possible. A five-year crash dataset was also analyzed, and this is to identify just where crashes have occurred in high frequency or in high severity. And with that, we identified priority locations in Clayton. So I think this figure on the left shows that Clayton Boulevard, Marsh Creek Road, were two corridors that had a lot of crashes in the 2018 to 2022 period. And then Oakhurst and Eagle Peak and Mount Terre and Mount Duncan were two intersections that also popped up as priority locations. We also had several emphasis areas that were identified through just the crash trends and patterns. So pedestrian safety, improper turning, unsafe speeding, or, sorry, unsafe speeding or aggressive driving. The principal arterials, such as Clayton and Marsh Creek Road, and then drivers in that kind of youngish 25 to 39 years old, were some of the themes that popped up in the crash history and is a starting point of how safety can start to be enhanced in Clayton. So with that, we also identified some countermeasures and safety strategies. So the engineering countermeasures are the kind of physical projects and upgrades that can be made based on some of these emphasis areas. We'd be looking at things like signal upgrades, pavement markings for crossings, additional signage for intersections, pedestrian crossings, lower speeds, other traffic calming treatment, and, oop, sorry, I keep hitting this, pedestrian and separated bike lanes. For the non-engineering strategies, these are more of the plan and policies that can help guide safety through Clayton. So these are things like education programs, targeted enforcement, and some emerging technology. Next slide. So two kind of example projects were also identified. So these were the two intersections that were identified as the priority locations based on the crash history. So first, the Oakhurst Drive and Eagle Peak Avenue project. This is a good example of just a lot of the signalized intersections in Clayton where we can look at improving signal hardware, improving signal visibility, installing advanced warning signs. So if people are driving on curved roads, they are, especially visitors, are aware that they're approaching an intersection and a signalized intersection at that. Also installing high-visibility crosswalks and then separated bike lanes or bike crossing markings, just so those pedestrian and bicycle facilities are very visible to those that are navigating through the intersection. Next slide. And then Mount Terre Parkway and Mount Duncan Drive is a good example of some of the neighborhood calming that could be done. So we had the feedback from residents that speeding in neighborhoods was a concern. We had a, I believe, serious injury crash that occurred here in that five-year period. And so things that could be done in neighborhoods would be installing signs and paving markings that encourage slower speeds on those neighborhood roadways. Splitter islands on the minor roads, so for vehicles that might be turning, don't make a turn very quickly. They kind of see that physical barrier, block kind of thing, and then they will slow down to make that turn. And then there are other neighborhood calming treatments, such as speed humps, curb bulvouts, where people might be crossing a lot, and then signage and striping to kind of separate the, maybe where people are parking from where they're traveling in the roadway. So finally, with that, we have the evaluation and implementation. The LRSP identifies action items and performance measures that will help meet the vision and goals. Those are presented in near and long term. So they're, you know, with funding and with kind of staff time, the safety working group can really decide what can we do in the short term, what is more of a long-term future for Clayton. The LRSP also includes funding sources that will help get you all funding to actually implement some of those countermeasures that have been suggested in the report. And then it also includes a evaluation template and framework for Clayton, so you can keep track of that safety performance through the year crash history, through the number of projects implemented, through some of the safety policy and programs that have also been implemented. Next slide. And so with that, we are all but finalized with the LRSP. It's kind of up to you. And if there's any minor things that need to be added, I think we can discuss that and they can be incorporated. But right now, what we're looking at in the near future is actually applying for some of that H-SIP Cycle 12 grant funding. So that will be announced, I believe, late April to early May, is what Caltrans is expecting. And we are putting together an application package to get increased signal visibility at 13 intersections. So that will look like at least the retroreflective backplates. And we'll be doing a little more digging to see if maybe that also includes things like bigger signal heads and other countermeasures that just can make those signals more visible to people who are navigating through the intersections. Contra Costa Transportation Authority is also working on their own SS4A grant application. They've recently completed their own, I think, county-wide safety assessment. And so I believe they're looking to go after, they're working with multiple agencies within Contra Costa County, and I believe Clayton is on board to collaborate with them to try and join in on that opportunity to get some grant funding for multiple agencies within the county, but within Clayton specifically. So that's all for me.
Thank you very much. Questions? Comments?
The only question that I had earlier today, and thank you, Larry, for clarifying that, is I just wanted a little bit more direction on the Safety Working Group. And Ben, I see you're here tonight. You're the first person I thought of for that group. I didn't know if we needed to identify who was going to be in that group tonight and members of the community. It sounds like it's a little bit more long-term. Do you want to?
I don't believe the council needs to make a specific recommendation on the who's going to comprise of that group. Tonight's really just to make sure that a group is understood, that the council is establishing. Staff will work. I think my intention is to invite members of the public who have neighborhood traffic concerns or general traffic concerns to join us in this probably semi-annual kind of review would be my approach and get input. And then also, you know, gauge prioritization of the different levels. And then that would be brought back to the council, generally on a capital improvement plan-type project, right? So that we could say, we met as a safety working group. They suggested, let's do some improvements at some of those two intersections that are highlighted or something else. And then the council would decide if they want to fund that or if we were able to obtain some grants, that would be in combination.
Thank you for clarifying that, Larry. Thank you. Good, great presentation.
Any other comments? Councilmember Tillman?
Yes, thank you. I just had a, maybe one or two questions. So I know you've identified these two intersections or at least these two neighborhoods. As you're working with this safety working group, the safety working group, is it possible, if we're trying to get to this Vision Zero by 2050, to add other neighborhoods? I'm thinking about, I'm forgetting his name now, but the gentleman with the son who wanted the additional work done on Mitchell Canyon Road, et cetera, that's leading, and I'm thinking about the, that trail that comes from the elementary school by Mount Zion down to, down the hill to downtown, as well as Peacock Creek. Like, there's other neighborhoods where people have mentioned issues. Can those be incorporated too at later dates?
I think the intention is to be open to the entire city.
Good.
And, you know, how we advertise it to the community, I think, maybe through the city manager's weekly newsletters or, you know, those elements to let folks know that we are soliciting input and then maybe even hold a, like a Zoom meeting or something on a specific date that folks could chime in. The intention is not to make it like a Subject to Brown Act-type working group. It's just to provide an opportunity for members of the public. And they're definitely folks, I've talked to each neighborhood, generally has someone who has a concern about something, that this now is a that this now is a forum that you can bring this to that helps the staff prioritize and then bring it before the council.
Okay, good. No, it was Jimmy Senke. That's his name. Yes, thank you. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Larry, a couple of things just to clarify. I noticed we're starting to do some street striping now. Is that part of this plan?
It's not specifically part of this plan, but we, just as most people are aware, if you've driven through Clayton Road, within the last week, there was lane line striping along between the two lanes and going in a certain direction, and then the left turn pockets. As most of you are aware, a lot of that had faded over time, and it was old striping where it used what I call bot dots, like the pavement markers, and a lot of them have been lifted off and gone. So the striping was getting inadequate, and so we received a few requests from the public about, especially at night, you're not able to delineate your lane. So we engaged a striping contractor to install that current striping, which is to use thermoplastic striping along with reflectors.
Give me a little more explanation on that, because I was going to ask you a question about that.
Yeah, so just to, the current standard is to use striping paint, thermoplastic, you know, it's retroreflective, has ground glass in it. So when your beams of your vehicle shine on it, it shines a little more than just regular paint. That is the current standard because of autonomous vehicles in the future are easier to recognize that type of striping. So it's actually, the width is, used to be four inches, now it's like six inches. These are all planning for the future, and the, sort of, the old pavement dots are kind of gone in the past. They still exist in some locations. We did look at a price of just replacing with the old striping, but the cost difference wasn't that much, and it felt, you know, it was important to go with the current standard.
On some of the striping, I guess Concord had just gone through a very elaborate restriping of a lot of their major intersection and roadways. Are we going to see anything like that with those green areas designated that are for either turning or bicycle riding?
We don't currently have a project that has what's called the conflict zone green paint usually for bicycle facilities. It's meant to be an area where bicycles are not supposed to have a conflict movement from a vehicle, so they know that they're technically in a, safe zones are right. But that is pretty prevalent among many different communities. I believe Clayton, when they installed their bike lanes on the major arterials, that was probably just prior to the implementation of the green type paint in a lot of communities. I would anticipate in the future that, so we restripped portions of Clayton Road, but like the shoulder line, which was repainted, it was part of the bike lane, was not touched because that was still in good shape. But when the road is repaved, you'll have to do the striping again, and there should be a discussion as to what maybe enhanced features, like Grace mentioned, of, you know, providing visibility for bicyclists or pedestrians would be added.
Anything that improves the lane identification is going to be very helpful, particularly in, you know, rainy weather. The other question I had, you and I talked about this before, but those yellow stripes around the traffic signals, is that in there in the future?
Yes. So that is, Grace mentioned it, she used probably technical terms at the 13 intersections. Adding the retroreflect, or the reflective yellow tape that a lot of other communities have started embracing is part of the H-SIP grant that we're pursuing. The cost is, what we initially estimated is over $30,000 because it's a lot of labor to go up.
Right, yeah.
So that's something we are pursuing a grant, hopefully we'll receive it.
And the only reason I bring it up, anything that really highlights traffic controls, which some of our residents unfortunately don't seem to honor, and so, but we've increased our police officer's ability to be more effective on that, and we've got now two working, functioning motorcycles that certainly will help that during the summertime. Anyway, lastly, from my, I'm just surprised at the small amount for the budget, $56,000? Is that the total at this point?
Yeah, for this effort, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Anything else? All right, I'm going to go, open up the public comment, and I do have one card. HC, Mr. Grover.
Thank you, council. Good evening. I was planning on coming tonight anyway. Just so happens that Grace and Kittleson are here and talking about stuff that I care about, so fantastic. So thank you, council, for taking this seriously enough to hire experts like this. Vision Zero Plan is very, it's huge, it's important, it's a big picture our city really should do to make the streets safe for everyone. I had a couple examples of things I was going to mention tonight, I'll touch on that, but primarily, one thing I wanted to mention, just as a framework for why making our streets safer is really important, is more than just the physical safety of everyone that's not in a car, but it's an economic benefit. If we think about the places that we want to go, there are places that are walkable, that are friendly for people that are not in cars. Think about the street right outside this window here. It's two lanes. If people hit that green light, they're going 50 miles an hour. That's not a place I want to spend a lot of time. In my mind, this library should be safely connected to our city center, and this would be a perfect stretch to slow down traffic. It would make our city more attractive, it would connect this terrific library that we have to our businesses, it would really, when we have festivals, it's just more area that could be enhanced and more attractive. The particular areas that I wanted to mention just from a safety standpoint, I actually kind of touched on a little bit, they're actually right outside this window too, a couple parts in the bike lanes. So I bike into work in Walnut Creek a couple times a week. By doing that, I see our town by a whole different perspective. One thing that's really important, right past the library here, there is effectively a blind curve. The bike lane happens to narrow right around that same point. Incredibly dangerous. Almost every time I ride there, I see a car speeding and cutting that. That's something that should be addressed. On the other side, same bike lane, almost every day, there's plant debris in the bike lane. You got to go out into traffic to avoid it. If traffic was going 20 miles an hour, no big deal. Everybody's fine. If they're going 50, it's deadly. So just wanted to put that framework out there, but again, appreciate the city taking this seriously, hiring experts. It's fantastic. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Grover. Anybody else in the audience that didn't submit a card to speak on this item? Seeing nobody? And do we have anybody online?
I can confirm no comments.
None at all. Thank you very much for closing public comment on this item, bringing it back up to the city council for decision, moving forward, action.
Well, there is just one thing that I want to add, and this kind of goes to our, again, back to our community survey and our strategic planning goals that council member Tillman and I worked on. This was our number one goal, was public safety on the roads, ADA improvements, improved roadways. And so I think this goes to the heart of, you know, what we were just talking about as our five goals for the next five years. So I'm absolutely all for this.
Thank you. Yes.
Yes, I was going to speak to the exact same thing, so thank you, Vice Mayor. I concur, I think it's very important. And the only other thing that I would ask staff to do is to look, take a look at, if I'm understanding Mr. Grover correctly, it sounds like outside the library, so maybe close to that empty lot across the street as you're heading into downtown, that there's debris in the street in the bike lane?
From the elementary school, all the way down.
Okay. If staff could maybe have maintenance take a look, to take a look at that. But I'm all in favor of adopting this resolution. I think it's great. So thank you again, Grace.
Thank you. Anyone else from the city council? Mr. Clovin.
I was going to say, I'm in favor as well. I moved to adopt the resolution of establish a Vision Zero policy. And go ahead and approve the local roadway safety plan.
And I'll second.
It's been moved by council member Clovin, and seconded by council member Tillman to adopt a resolution to establish a Vision Zero policy related to eliminating fatalities and injury accidents on the Clayton roadway network. Clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Clovin?
Yes.
Tillman?
Aye.
Juan is excused. Vice Mayor Trippiano?
Yes.
And Mayor Diaz.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. And that concludes all of the action items under item 8B, excuse me, 8A, B, and C. Thank you so much. And now we'll move on to item nine, which is council member items for future agenda items.
So I'll repeat what I said at the last meeting. I would like to have a discussion sooner than later relative to the sales tax being re-brought back to conversation and reevaluating the LMD parcel tax in 2026 in lieu of the conversation we had associated with a all-encompassing parcel tax, which would require a two-thirds vote by the city.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
No, I do, yeah. Sorry. For some reason, I was thinking we were doing our council reports and we were going down the line. Yes. Again, I will reiterate my same plea for this council to agendize us discussing having the city attorney investigate issues at City Hall with city staff and council treatment of said staff members. I think it's very important that we do this. I've also asked for there to be a third party to investigate. And the only other thing that I will add, since I've had several questions from people since our last meeting, is it was alleged that the city attorney can, or the city manager can act on their own if they hear that there are any issues going on, and I would like the city attorney to state whether or not she is able to act on those things without direction from the council. Is that something that you're able to do?
I'll give a brief response. I don't have authority to enter into contracts for any sum, so in this case specifically, to hire an outside investigator would require council approval.
Great, thank you.
Especially to investigate the council, to be clear.
Correct, yes. Thank you for clarifying that. And so my request, again, is for this to be agendized so that we can discuss it and direct the city attorney to act on that. And speaking with several present and former staff members, I think it's very important. And to Mr. Hayden's point earlier, exit interviews established with said council members who are leaving, I think it's important for us to do. And so if that is not happening, or if that's something that we can assist with, I know that we have an HR director, but your last day here is Friday, so I'm not sure how that can occur, but I think it's very important that we do understand the reasons why people are leaving. And so that's my request. And one more. The other is to possibly have governance training for our council. I know that we do have different trainings that council is allowed to do with the League of California Cities, but I know other cities have done it. I think it's very important that all council members understand our roles and how everything works. And we've had several people come up during public comment and asking like, who's taking direction from whom and how does it work, et cetera? And I just think it would be a good thing for us to do if we were to employ someone to come in to come and do governance training here. That's my last request.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Thank you. That concludes item number nine, and we move on to council reports, and council member Clovin.
So last Thursday, I had the opportunity of gathering with a great group of people, the Clayton CBCA, and we had a fabulous meal together, put together by Cali Gazine, Chef Judy, and Tiffany do an incredible job. It was a great coq au vin and accoutrement. And again, just watching the CBCA give funds to deserving entities like the high school groups. And I got to say, even to a certain event called Clayton Cleans Up, which is my next item. I've been busy getting things going. By the way, this is the posters that are starting to go around town. The drawing was put together by a junior in high school, Juju Yoshi. She did a phenomenal job. She said, hey, do whatever you want, and that's, I think, the most creative drawing we've had yet, and was put on the poster. It's going to be on your T-shirts. You're going to actually want to wear those T-shirts all year long as opposed to some of the T-shirts we get. It's happening on April 20th, which is literally a couple weeks from Saturday, so we're coming up real quick on it. If you know of a city group that is out there, and it doesn't matter, it's a city group that wants to represent themselves, have them contact me, and I will make sure there's a 10 by 10 space for them down in the courtyard of City Hall. That's where we'll be gathering in the morning, picking up our bags, picking up our T-shirts, and then any high schoolers can sign in for service hours. And we'll have coffee and donuts and music going in the background. And then our sponsors, Republic Services, is putting on a great barbecue. And if you haven't had their barbecue, they are out there working and doing their thing, and you get sodas and hot dogs and hamburgers and chips, and just hang out and commune as a community, literally, and break bread together afterwards. And that's part of the fun as well. So looking forward to that. If anybody wants to take some posters and put it up on local businesses, please come for me. Susan Hurl from Cover Public Services just got that, and these to me today, and there's going to be an Adam the Pioneer, who also is a sponsor, and I'm looking forward to the event.
Thank you for your leadership on that, Peter. It's going to be, it's a great event, and it really helps the city out. And I got to tell you, the barbecue is the real highlight at the end of the day when you come back and bring in your trash and refuse or debris that's all over. Councilmember Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. On the 21st, I attended the Cal Cities Community Services Policy Committee down in Burbank, California. We had some great guest speakers. The city of Burbank talked about their homelessness and how they were dealing with that issue in their town with a lot of wraparound services. And then we were also able to hear from a researcher from USC who talked about why people end up homeless or unhoused, and it was pretty eye-opening to see probably what a lot of us already know, but a lot of folks are actually living in their homes, not their homes, living in their vehicles as their homes, but people who have some of them full-time jobs, but they're not able to have a roof over their heads. A lot of times, people are thinking that people that are homeless might be addicted to drugs. They also talked a lot about how that it could be alcoholism, but just not being able to afford. But they've got gym memberships, they're plugging in their phones. They are, a lot of cities are now implementing where they can actually park overnight. But there were also some policies that are coming down from Sacramento that are now trying to limit where they're able to park their vehicles to kind of keep people from living in their cars in town. So they're asking people to be aware of those policies that are coming to, that might come to fruition later on this year. But it was a very nice, robust conversation just to hear why people might end up homeless, and it isn't because they're all on drugs or substance abusers. It really is people who are really just can't afford to live based on the cost of living here in California. So that was on the 21st. On the 22nd, we all know that we had our closed session to higher our interim, and I'm glad that Adam will be joining us. I attended the CBCA meeting on the 28th yesterday along with council member Clovin and Vice Mayor Trippiano. We attended the Autism Acceptance and Awareness Month. We kicked that off yesterday, thanks to Alice and Snow Spear hitting that, and we raised the autism acceptance flag at the Grove Park, so you will see that now. And I had meetings at City Hall today with our interim city manager, Amy Walker, as well as with our finance department and our police department. I also had meetings with Clayton Pride Board as we're gearing up for June 2nd for our parade, and I finalized the Firewise Community Meeting, which is on April 10th, as you heard from Mr. Killoran. Again, that address is 5010 Raven Way, and that's at 3:00 PM on the 10th. And I had numerous conversations about taxes and parcel taxes and sales taxes. And during this time, I do want to tell Amy, thank you very much for your service to our dear city and for sacrificing a lot of your time to come and make that commute and that trip, and I wish you the best of luck, and it's been a pleasure getting to know you. And I appreciate everything that you did to help try to get us on the right foot and moved into the century and things documented. I know it's still a work in progress, but I cannot thank you enough for your professionalism and everything that you did, so thank you. You will be missed.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Trippiano.
Trippiano. Thank you, Mayor Diaz. So the city-sponsored special events committee had their last meeting last Monday, March 26th. And new this year for our city-sponsored special events is we will be using a promoter for our concerts in the Grove. That person has been hired, it's prime time entertainment, and they are working very closely with our staff and with our sound engineer, and we're going to be doing some other improvements this year. We're talking about a stage for the concerts, just to really, you know, do some nice enhancements. So the other thing, I just wanted to see if I had anything else about that. Oh, the other thing that we Oh, the other thing that we completed, thank you Sandy Johnson and council member Juan, we finally put together, or they did, a manual for the Fourth of July duties, tasks, responsibilities. I have a lot of volunteers calling me, I've been in touch with all of them except one. I owe somebody a phone call tomorrow, and there are a lot of folks that are coming out that want to volunteer for our special events, so thank you for putting that together. And as I mentioned earlier, council member Juan did make a presentation to the PFC back in February, and they are just thrilled to be a part of Concerts in the Grove, and we will work out the details, I'll look at that Facebook post, and talk to Ally, who I think is our contact over there. I'm still working on sponsorship and marketing, and more to come on that. We had our, right after that, we had our Budget Nautic Committee meeting later that afternoon, and thank you again, Procti and Amy, both for answering questions I had about consultants and also explaining how our LMD is, operates and is billed. That was very interesting. We also interviewed Mr. Frank Gavidia for the Community Financial Sustainability Committee, and I believe that will be on our April 16th agenda to finalize and decide on his application for that committee. Yes, I was at the autism flag raising yesterday. Thank you again to Allison Snow and for everybody who came out to join us. And Peter and I had a wonderful meeting with our, now we can officially say, our new interim city manager, Anna Pulser, yesterday. He had some questions for us, we had some questions for him, and it's been really exciting to meet him and to have him join us. I also wanted to say too, I've got just a couple of quick announcements. Concerts in the Grove dates, I have those. I think last year you said they had to be approved, I don't know if they actually have to be approved, they're on our city website, May 25th, June 8th, June 22nd, July 6th, July 20th, and August 3rd, 17th, and 31st. And I just want to invite everyone to the Skylar Bistro ribbon cutting ceremony, which is going to be Saturday, April 13th, from 12 to 2. I've been working with Nikki there, who's the owner. We're going to do a ribbon cutting, we're going to do some photos. I hope everybody can join us, I sent something out just today, it's on the website already, thank you. She's going to have some food samples, and she is super excited about being part of this community, so if you can come out and support that ribbon cutting, again, April 13th, 12 to 2. I talked about the book sale, and then I just want to say that Clayton Valley Village is having their monthly happy hour, they always have it right before our council meeting, so it's hard to get there, but it's April 16th at 4:00 PM. Sometimes I really do want to go to the happy hour rather than, no, April 16th at 4:00 PM at La Veranda, and if you want to learn more, it's village.clayton@gmail.com. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mine was a little briefer. I first, on the 21st of March, attended the County Connection Board meeting, and to that point, the bus system has continued to work and function very well. The one thing is, is though we seem to be retiring a lot of drivers and operators with many years of service, 25 years plus, and the big challenge is recruitment for replacements, but that will continue to go on. On the Friday, the 22nd, I, like everyone else, attended our special closed session in which we ultimately acted tonight on selecting Adam Pulser as our interim city manager. On the Tuesday, the 26th, attended the barbecue committee meeting, which is going to be, as noted before, up at Oakhurst Country Club on the 14th and 15th of June, going to be a wonderful event, come on out and enjoy some great barbecue. Last night was the almost last meeting of the Art and Wine Committee, and we're all set for the 27th and the 28th of April for another wonderful festival downtown. Finally, this morning, I met with the acting city manager and executive assistant to the city manager, Amy, and thank you very much, met with also Sergeant Shaw, where we got a briefing on that program about the grant that they got from FEMA. And I also got the opportunity to meet our newest and final police officer, that brings us up to full speed at 11 officers, and he'll be sworn in next week officially, so we will have, we'll be back to full staff. And with that, before I adjourn, I want to thank Gabby for sitting in as our acting city attorney, excuse me, city council clerk tonight. Thank you very much, you did an excellent job, thank you. And Larry in the back room for audio visual, and I also want to thank Amy Walker for, this is her final meeting tonight, and she moves on to bigger things, and thank you, and we wish you well.
Yes, and I'm sorry, I didn't get, I forgot, I had it written in my notes. Amy, thank you so much, you've been such a pleasure to work with. I've learned so much from you, I wish you all the best, and I just wish you were staying longer, but good luck to you, and thank you for also being very helpful to Adam, he has just raved about his conversations with you, so we'll miss you. Thank you.
If there's no more comments, I'm going to adjourn us at 8:56 PM to our next meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, April 16th, right here in Hoyer Hall. Good night. Oh, what, you got another comment?
No, it's just a question, Peter.
Oh.
I said we were all 4-0 tonight.